Please stand. Would you like to welcome the Coltsneck High School ROTC on our behalf? Your presentation colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the brother which stands on my nation under God, indivisible, with great goodness and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome you to a beautiful Coltsneck High School. Assuming to the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Part I, laws of nineteen seventy-five, this meeting has been duly advertised in the Espart Press issue of June sixteenth, two thousand sixteen. All municipal councils, townships, and the boroughs present the regional high school district have been duly notified and the requirements of posting of notices have been made. Motion for minutes approval. Thank you. Second? Second. Any discussion seen, Mr. Boyd's? Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank Houser?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavine?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corolla?
Yes.
Yes. Communications are on file in the Board Secretary Office. Superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. So we are going to opening tonight with the Spooktacular Window Painting Awards. And the Spooktacular event that takes place in downtown Freehold every year, I've said it a million times, it's one of the really unique community events that I think really pulls us together. There are inordinate amount of folks who do an awful lot of work to pull that day off. I think it's a wonderful testament to the talents of the students in our district, the dedication of our faculty and staff, and the commitment of a larger community to bring folks together on a day like that. And it always makes me incredibly proud to walk up and down the streets of Freehold and to see so many of the community members interacting with our students as they're painting their murals. And I think it's just, it's everything that a quality public education should be about, a committed community, really terrific students and faculty working together and all that coming together in this unbelievable mixture of what is Spooktacular. So I'd like to call up two folks who are instrumental in that event, instrumental in a whole lot of things in the town of Freehold, but Billy Anderson, who is the chairman, and Ms. Barbara Kane. And I think they'll... I think they'll advertise some of the winners of the event. Take it away, Billy.
Thank you, Mr. Sampson. I appreciate that very much. My name is Billy Anderson, and I'm the chairman for the Freehold Halloween Spooktacular Committee. I'd like to thank you all for being here at tonight's meeting. We are here to finally announce the awards for the annual window painting contest, which took place in downtown Freehold on October thirteenth. I, of course, would like to thank the Spooktacular Committee for all their hard work in this event, especially Barbara Kane, who was here tonight and helped us out, Tracy Moriarty and Judy Guy, all did a great job putting this event together. But I'd also like to thank some people in the district that are very important to us for helping the Spooktacular Committee make this event work properly. The one superintendent, Charles Sampson, thank you very, very much. Heshi Moses and the Freehold Regional High School Board of Education. Jay Robinson, very kind individual. Annette Piazza and Rebecca Palastro, both very, very sweet people. And for Rebecca and for Annette, we want to thank them for all the diligence and efforts to bring it all together, the devils and the details, and the two of them worked very hard on that. Rebecca, if you've got a moment, I'd like to present you. Barbara, today you will be flowers for one that thank you very much. Thank you so much. Who did that to Annette for us? Thank you very much. It's because of the assistance and effort of these individuals that the window painting contest even happens. The committee is very truly thankful for all that you do for us. Every August, our committee gets together to start planning Halloween events for the month of October. A great deal of planning and effort go into these events. Beginning of the month, we put up cornstalks all over the town to get the Halloween spirit started. Now, that's a great start, but the real magic happens when the students of the district high school art departments show up to start painting the windows of businesses downtown. That is most certainly what gets us all in the Halloween spirit. Every year, these incredibly gifted students come out to show off their talents, and every year, we can really look forward to see what ideas they come up with. And of course, every year, we are totally blown away by their creativity. This year, we had about ninety windows ever painted, and I know that does it to not have an easy time picking the winners. Here tonight to pass out the awards is Mike Federici from Federici's Family Italian Restaurant. Federici's has been the sponsor of this event for at least the past five years or so, and I believe the kids are very happy about that. He's so kind, though he makes sure that everybody... And to end it, I'll say, Mr. Sampson, he makes sure that everybody gets fed, and boy, they are very happy about it. We really do appreciate Mike's kindness, and want to thank him very much for his incredible generosity. All right, now let's get to what we're here for. Thank you again, Mike, we appreciate it. All right, we are going to start off with the third place. That would be Marlboro High School, Principal Mr. Sean Boylan. The painting is "Screwing Spells," painted by Jessalyn Lou. Teachers Laura Galino and Elizabeth Brownall, Supervisor Katie Goldstein. The actual winner is Tracy Ramirez, representing the Grobber Security Forty-Sixth Row Point Street where the painting was. Excellent painting. Now, in second place, two paintings. This is a time. Freehold Township, Principal Mrs. Elizabeth Hippley. The painting Frankenstein, painted by John Vane and Marilynna Monathus. And the painting Nosferatu, painted by Victoria Spinoso and Angelina Ortiz. Teachers Marissa Alvarado and Max Boyle. Now, that was my group, I gotta tell you, they were some of the best, best kids in the whole... I tell you, they did a great job, and I was very proud of them. They behaved real well. Nice job, you too. Well, thank you. And finally, first place, Analkum High School, Principal Dr. Adam Angelazi. The painting Pendour's Box, painted by Megan Carlstein and Sabrina Palazola. Teachers Robert Andreisi and Richard Berger. Congratulations to all the winners, they all did a great job, a bunch of creative, creative students. We also want to thank the district for its participation in our annual Halloween parade. We once again had all six high school bands in attendance, and the Coltsneck ROTC led our parade. Feedback was tremendous. All right, thank you very much to all of you, we're really looking forward to seeing you next year. Hope everyone has a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thanks again.
So congratulations to the winners. Fantastic talent, as evident throughout the day. And we have wonderful weather for it this year as well. Thank you once again to the Spooktacular Committee, Billy, Mrs. Kane. You know, individuals make communities go, and Mr. Federici is unbelievably generous. And communities go as individuals commit to them and continue to put that time in when sometimes others won't. You always end up with small groups of people that do inordinate work to make a community hum. So thank you for being that real, that hum of Freehold. Okay, so we're going to switch gears now for those of you who are winners, you don't have to stay for this unless you really, really want to, there's no worries if you exit stages left. We are going to talk about Park, though, if anybody wants to stay. So a couple of things that I'd like to preface, so we're about to conduct our annual assessment presentation for the district. And obviously, with the implementation of the Park examinations across the state of New Jersey the past couple of years, we're two years into that assessment being formalized. Give the difficulty with assessing the Park scores and what it means to us as a district are sort of multiple. Multiple in the sense, one, that there's a very high refusal rate that clouds some of that data for us. There is a test that is two years old, and we're still seeing how that plays out over time in terms of its validity. And then we have students that, you know, come to us from eight different municipalities, seven different sending districts, and so that also sort of comes into the cauldron of our data. Beginning with the class of two thousand twenty, so this year's ninth grade, it's, there's sort of a seismic shift in what Park is. So students who had been in our schools had the ability to take a number of alternative assessments rather than Park as a means to graduation. And if you remember, Park has replaced HESPA as the graduation requirement in the state of New Jersey. Dr. Moore and Dr. Hazel, I don't want to steal any of your thunder, but just a few notations that I think are really important for the public's understanding. Beginning with the class of two thousand twenty, you must pass a Park examination to graduate, and you must, you must sit for the Park examination if you are enrolled in a public school. So there's different pathways there and...
I'm sorry, can I interrupt?
Let me give it a little more texture, though, Michael. Just give me... Because the difference is, you have to, the class of two thousand twenty has to take ELA nine, ELA ten, or ELA eleven, and if you don't meet one of those, you can still use one of the following, right? So, but you have to, there's a little way out for the class of two thousand twenty. The class of two thousand twenty-one, and I'm just reading off of the state requirements, must pass Park ELA grade ten or ELA grade nine, ELA grade eleven, or meet a portfolio appeal. And for mathematics, they must pass Park Algebra One or Park Geometry or Park Algebra Two if eligible. So two thousand twenty-one, it becomes hard and firm. Two thousand twenty, there are still some alternative opportunities for students. However, for both of those graduating years, there are, there are shifts in what has been required from the State Department of Education. There are many questions that are not yet answered. We've asked those questions, for instance, students who might be in seventh grade, who are accelerated in mathematics and don't sit for a Park exam, do they need to take a Park exam in high school? Is, will there be some sort of waiver process? How will that be determined moving forward? We've asked this question repeatedly of the Department of Education, as a matter of fact, we were asking the question at the county roundtable this past Friday relative to the portfolio appeal process for students, and just asking, what is the plan in place for a number of these unanswered questions? So there's, there's system, there's a structure of assessments that have not been clearly outlined in terms of how that might play out for some of the students that are not just in our system, but are in the K8s that also share our students. So I'll let Dr. Hazel and Dr. Moore go through the specific data to this point. Wait, go ahead, Mr. Messinger, I think you wanted to ask a question ahead of that.
I'm sorry, could you just say for two thousand twenty?
We're gonna be going through them.
They're gonna go through it.
We'll go through the detail.
It's a change. It is a change, you know, so the past couple of years, students have been able to simply take alternative assessments and demonstrate proficiency in a whole laundry list of different assessments. That is still there for the class of two thousand twenty, but for the class of two thousand twenty-one, they've got to sit for certain exams, and there's also, there's some opportunities there to take alternative assessments, but they are going to have to show that they sat for a particular Park exam. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Hazel and Dr. Moore to go through some of the specifics. It's very convoluted, so hopefully they'll walk us through it step by step.
Good evening. As Mr. Sampson kind of preface, Dr. Moore in the curriculum instruction office, myself and Mr. Sampson, we're really spending a lot of time going through each of the assessment requirements for each class year by year and what those expectations are. Annually, we are required to report out on our assessment results to our Board of Education. As you recall, we were here last year with Park results, and also in the past when there was the HSPA, which was our state assessment. You know, for the board and for folks that are here, for the Park English Language Arts and Literacy assessments, students are taking that in grades three through eleven. For Park Mathematics, there are three components, again, students are taking Park in grades three through eight, but the high school required in our end of course assessments in Algebra One, Geometry and Algebra Two. You will hear later, as Mr. Sampson preface, as we roll into the class of two thousand twenty-one, that Algebra assessment becomes really critical, and we're going to step through each of the years for you. But our focus for the public report tonight is really focused on our state assessment result for Park and DLM, which is Dynamic Learning Maps, which I will go through for the class of two thousand sixteen. When you see Park performance levels, and you've seen a slide like this before, the scores are broken up in levels. Students are also given a numeric score within that band, that level band. But a level one would not yet be meeting the grade level expectations, two partially meeting, three approaching grade level expectations, four meeting the expectations, and five exceeding grade level expectations. Each of the students have received their score reports for Park, and it outlines various components, and you can see how they performed in each of those components, but they are given an overall numeric score and a level score. For students, classified students with significant intellectual disabilities from grades three through eight, and also in grade eleven only, some of our students, again, that's collaboratively, you know, worked out between parents and the child's study team about this alternate assessment. This is a computer-based assessment for some special education classified students, and this is really in lieu of the alternate proficiency assessment, which we used to have APA. So it's a new name now, Dynamic Learning Maps, really connected to core curriculum content standards and the essential element skills. So we do have scores to report out for the class of two thousand sixteen in this area. Their performance levels on this assessment are just a little bit different. For the Park, it was one to five, for DLM, it's one to four. Level one, emerging, where the student is demonstrating emerging understanding of an ability to apply content knowledge and skills represented by the essential elements. Two, they're approaching the target. Three, at target. Four, advanced or exceeding expectations. So a three or a four in this area would be a passing score for DLM. I'd like to preface, our special educators in the district, especially those working with self-contained program students, really, you know, of course, take this very seriously with the students, but are continuously through their coursework in grade nine and ten, really preparing them for this assessment, which is a big shift, you know, where that especially that it is computer-based and connected to the core curriculum, the core standards. So I just want to show you our results for DLM for our district, and again, these numbers are on the DOE's website for the state of New Jersey, but for Freehold Regional High School District, for English Language Arts Literacy, we tested sixty-nine students. Of the sixty-nine students, thirty-four were at target with a level three, and sixteen were advanced, for a passing rate for our district of seventy-two percent. And you can see the difference as compared to the state of New Jersey there. And in mathematics, we tested sixty-two students, eighteen at eleven, one advanced, thirty-one percent. Again, you know, exceeding New Jersey's, our students are all partaking in this exam if this is in their IEP, it is their alternative assessment. So again, looking at those percentages and the work of the teachers and the students, you know, we were very proud of those results. As Mr. Sampson, you know, stated before, as we transition, and we're still transitioning from HESPA to Park, now year two for us, the class of sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen are eligible, and class of twenty has a little bit of a nuance, we'll go through that, you know, they have been provided with an opportunity to meet their graduation testing requirement with an alternate assessment, PSAT, ACT, Accuplacer, ASVAB. Students very early in their high school career, in grades nine and ten, are meeting that standard. So they're really, for most of our students, exceeding expectations very early on, which is the reason why you'll see the impact of participation, which Dr. Moore is going to dive into a little bit more. But again, those students are meeting that graduation, you know, requirement very early in their career. For this year's class of two thousand seventeen, nothing has changed, is exactly the same as the class of two thousand sixteen. Dr. Moore is going to take a deeper dive in actually going over our results for the district. I'm sure he will be prevising with some of those same themes as it relates to participation, but we just wanted to be very clear, you know, the state has allowed our students that opportunity. We do engage our students in some of these assessments, and they are doing, you know, performing at the level or exceeding expectation very early on in their academic career. I do, for, you know, the parents and for the public, if you are looking for more information as it pertains to Park, we, on our district website, under the Planning, Research, and Evaluation tab on our homepage under Department, we have a multitude of resources for parents, for students, and it also outlines the requirements for each class. As the information comes to us from the DOE, and it comes all the time, we continuously make sure that that page is up to date and refreshed with the new information. So again, that's a great resource for our parents, so that they know exactly what the expectations are, you know, for their child based on their plans. We'll have an opportunity, you know, for questions at the end, but at this time, I want to ask Dr. Moore, if he could share our English Language Arts Literacy results, our mathematics results, and we'll talk a little bit about class of twenty and class of twenty-one and what the changes are for those two classes. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to reiterate some of the points, the story of the district's Park performance is really a story of who takes the test and who doesn't take the test. And in thinking about that, too, we know what Dr. Hazel mentioned, that students aren't able to graduate from high school without meeting expectations on a college and career readiness assessment. And for the class of two thousand sixteen, for the class, I don't know if the class is going for it, but that meant either Park or an alternative assessment. So our graduation rates are nearly, you know, ninety-five percent. So what we see there is students meeting those expectations. We also see students, as Dr. Hazel mentioned, meeting those expectations very early in their high school career. So we offer ACT, we offer PSAT and other assessments very early in the high school career for our students. So they're meeting those expectations early, and those are the patterns we see in Park participation. Students who are most likely to have met their graduation assessment requirement are not necessarily participating in Park, especially as the years go on. So that's a piece that remains similar to last year, and as we go through English Language Arts and Math, you'll see a lot of similar patterns to last year, including that wrinkle that we discussed last year in algebra. So what we see here in these data, and I can give you a quick overview of the blue and the green, the green for each of our English Language Arts levels, ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade, the green columns off to the right represent the performance levels that we had... at which students are eligible to graduate based on this assessment. And you can see across the PARC states, across New Jersey, and then here at Creole Regional, you can see the story changes each year a little bit. So our ninth grade English Language Arts participants achieved the graduation required level of performance to the tune of about 55.5% of test takers. And that's not 55.5% of students in ninth grade, which we'll talk about in one second. But if you compare that to New Jersey and then to all of the PARC states, you can see that we are, we are ahead of the trend. Things begin to change as we get into 10th and 11th grade, but the participation rates are also beginning to change at that point as well. At the time of 10th grade, our students, many of them have already achieved, either through PARC or through another assessment like ACT or PSAT in many cases, they've already achieved their graduation requirement. So what I'm going to do is where I have these numbers of students who took the exam, as you watch those numbers go down, I put in the percentage of the class. So in ninth grade last year, 77% of our freshmen took the ninth grade English Language Arts PARC. And then in 10th grade, it was 59% of our sophomores. And then 11th grade, it was down to 51% of our juniors. So there are many students missing from this picture, particularly as you get further along in years. And that is, that is, I think, at least half of the story of our participation, our, our, our performance rate. Because the students, again, the students who are not taking this exam in 10th and 11th grade are students who have already displayed academic prowess through an alternative assessment. So those students are not participating in this exam. Math, and again, this is very similar to last year. Math also similar to last year, although we have that wrinkle in Algebra as well that we discussed last year. You can see here as well, there are some participation trends. And I'll jump right to that slide. 77% of our Algebra I students took the PARC exam. And you can see the performance there is, is lower than we would like. And that's what we were, we were looking at last year as well. The thing to remember, of course, is that a very large number of our students take Algebra before they come to us. So students who are in seventh or eighth grade taking Algebra, and those numbers are quite large, are meeting their state graduation requirement in PARC testing in seventh or eighth grade. Potential. So we don't have their performance here at all. So our middle school, our PARC middle schools are, are, are reporting their performance at their board meeting. So the students who have been accelerated in math from fifth, sixth grade are not taking the Algebra I PARC with us. And that's, that's, you know, something that we feel is definitely impacting on, on the district's performance. We should note here that we are being compared to all of the students in New Jersey who took the Algebra I PARC, whether they were in middle school or high school. We're not just being compared to high school students taking Algebra I PARC. So our ninth graders who have not been accelerated in math are being compared in that column to middle schoolers who have been accelerated in math. And that's, that's another important piece. But as you can see, as we go down, as we hit Geometry, which is now where we have those students as ninth graders, many of them, you can see our performance begins to, to outdo New Jersey and the other PARC states as well. And we see that as well in Algebra II. If you can see that down there, even with participation as low as 53% of our Algebra II students, our performance on the Algebra II exam is exceeding PARC and New Jersey averages. This is almost identical to what we saw last year. The, the, the thing that we're gaining more of an understanding from the data this year, the data haven't really improved in terms of granularity of the student level. We're not learning more about individual student performance on PARC. But each year that we get these data, we do learn a bit more about who opts in and who refuses the test. And that's, that's kind of the most interesting thing we learn from the PARC data is just more and more about who's taking the test and who isn't. So we continue to look at those patterns and impacts of refusal and our socioeconomic and other differences that predict participation in our district. We're looking at correlations to other measurements in terms of looking at how do, when we have a student who took PARC, how does their performance on PARC compare to their grades and their performance on other assessments? And we see some strong correlations in some corners and some not so strong in others. The, the need you have there is if a student took PARC and took all of these other assessments, then we can, we can sort of match them all up. But if you, if you've had spotty participation in any of those, it's hard to match you up to anything as a student. And then specific deficiencies, what can PARC tell us about specific deficiencies that individual students have? We're still honestly waiting for the data to kind of give us a bit of information about that. We have some programmatic information from PARC, but we can't really dive down into the individual strengths and weaknesses of students from the data that we receive, which that's been frustrating. And that's what has led, frankly, to some of the other testing that we do in order to kind of get additional and deeper views into student performance with other assessments. From here, we, to kind of pick up again the point on the graduation requirements, students to this point have been able to meet their graduation requirement for testing in PARC by passing any one of the PARC exams in English Language Arts, any one of the three math PARC exams, or any one of the alternative assessments like the SAT, SAT with certain cut scores. Or if all of that didn't work out for them, or they didn't participate in any of that, they could go through a portfolio assessment, which we ran for a small number of students in the spring. And then those portfolios are reviewed and graded, and then students are, are certified as being able to graduate. With our current ninth graders, it shifts a little bit. And, and this, this, this chart's a little busier than the next one, so I apologize for the small font. But in English Language Arts, you still have access, if you're a freshman right now, you still have access to the alternative assessments. However, in order to access the alternative assessments, you must sit for all three years of the English Language Arts PARC. If you refuse any one of those years, you no longer have access to the alternative assessments and you no longer have access to the portfolio assessment. So a student who refuses one of the three ELA PARC tests must pass one of them in order to be eligible for graduation under the current state guidelines. Same, same holds true in math. You must pass one of those three, Algebra I, Geometry, and not all students take Algebra II. You must pass one of those. If you don't pass any of those, you must have sat for all three of them before you can access the alternative assessments. This is a subtle but very important change to how things are right. And, and it has, it has us concerned, frankly, for students in, for example, a student who is a ninth grader who already took Algebra in middle school, but may have refused PARC. If they don't fare well on the remaining PARCs in front of them, or if they refuse them, then they don't have access to the other means of graduation. And that's, that's troubling to us. The state has not necessarily, so we're working with the KH to identify who those specific students are. But we're also worried about moving forward what this means for students. In the class of 2021, it evolves one step further. So our current eighth graders, who will be with us next year, they must take and pass the grade 10 English Language Arts PARC. If they don't pass it, notice they do not have access to alternative assessments anymore. They can go through the portfolio appeal, which is a fairly intensive process both for us and for them. They can go through the portfolio appeal, but they only have access to the portfolio appeal if they have taken all three years of PARC. So if I fail the grade nine PARC, well, let's, let's, let's change it. If I, if I, let's say if I'm a student and I, and I pass the grade nine PARC, but I do not pass the grade 10 PARC, I must then also take the grade 11 PARC before I can portfolio. So we run through hundreds of these. What if I do this and this is, it's sort of... Mathematics, similar. Algebra is the one to pass. If you do not pass the Algebra PARC, no matter how you do Geometry or Algebra II, if you're eligible for Algebra II, no matter how you do, you have to take them in order to access the portfolio appeal. So we get these, these sort of odd scenarios in which you have a student who takes the Algebra I PARC but is not successful, takes Geometry and passes it, maybe even takes Algebra II and passes it, but now must go through the portfolio appeal because they did not pass the Algebra I required assessment. And the specter here on the math side of this of the current eighth grader who took Algebra I in seventh grade, we have a fair number of those throughout the district. The current eighth grader who took Algebra I in seventh grade but refused PARC, according to this, is not eligible to graduate and cannot access the portfolio appeal. So that's where, that's the root of our questions to the Department of Ed. And, you know, well, what sort of processes there for students who took Algebra in middle school and they refuse it when refusal was something that was, was, was still unclear, how that would look for, for families and for communities? So this is the graduation requirement that, that they've set currently for the class of 2021, our current eighth graders, and moving forward. So the questions you may have are the same ones that we have. As Mr. Sampson noted earlier, those are questions we've asked. And, and answers, answers are forthcoming. There we are. So the portfolio is, is an assessment. We develop prompts for students to complete. We grade them against a rubric that we develop. And then that is sent off to the state for verification. All of our portfolios that we were, were successful. But the process there, you know, how that will play out this year, there may be some different opportunities for us to include other kinds of work in that portfolio is coming here. But as I said earlier, we continue to be worried about who even has access to that process to begin with. So if you haven't participated in the, in the, in the full range of assessments, you don't even have access to the portfolio according to these, to these updated requirements for our freshmen and for our sophomores.
What's the timeframe for the portfolio appeal and does that in any way, in fact, you know, they're close to high school requirements?
We, we, we weren't in a position where we had to hold any diplomas for students if, if that's, if that's what you mean by country.
Well, if they're applying to colleges, you know, other programs, yeah.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it has, colleges don't see any of that process.
They give us a timeframe to work on those tasks with the students. They get submitted to the Department of Ed, and it's in the timely manner for us to...
I'm just thinking about the stress on the student as they're looking forward. You know, there, you know, there are kids who have already met all their requirements, and they're still experiencing the stress of waiting for the acceptance to come in. And then add this, am I going to graduate? Am I going to graduate at the time? And I commit, you know, May versus the deadline for, you know, two years plus, you know, in these colleges, so, I mean...
The one thing to note in these requirements is if a student requires the portfolio according to these requirements, who'll know that very early in their high school career? But they still have an opportunity to participate in further years of PARC and potentially pass one of those exams and then portfolio. So, so we'll know at least from, from the rising eighth graders, the rising ninth graders of next year, current eighth graders, we'll have a good sense at the end of this year of which one of those students was not successful in Algebra I. But in English Language Arts, we've got to wait until grade 10 before we know.
And you can't portfolio them still? You know, you're in...
That we don't know. Well, well, because of the participation requirement, yes. Yes. But can, can, do we have opportunities to gather work and engage them in some of that work before they're sophomore students? Possibly. That, we, we haven't seen the detailed guidance on that.
Did I do you say that the seventh grader did not follow?
Yeah.
They refused to take the test?
Yeah.
He graded the test?
That's what that chart says. So this, this is what we have.
That's our question, I suppose.
Yeah. So, and, and to add to that too, if I didn't go on to pass the Algebra II PARC, what? I'm not eligible to graduate. So, so I, I admire the sort of, the, the interesting sort of facets of that as well. But it's, it's, it's something that we, we do expect to get additional guidance on as, as the state considers all of those scenarios. We have to remember too, we're used to being a regional high school district, where regional high school districts are, are a minority in the state. So often, when guidance like this or guidelines like this come down, regulations, we're often pointing out to them what this means for regional high school districts. And this is one of those situations potentially where we're good at creating and think of that. And, and then, you know, we'll, we'll get some clarification. We can, we can only hope. But it's correct, there is, there is that scenario of the seventh grader who's been accelerated quite far in math, who because of a refusal two years ago is, is now unable to graduate from this.
Yes?
Just back to your slide, right at the green columns there. I just, I'm wondering if you could put that in those percentages in a little bit context? Like, do we have a percentage that we assess by certification, or is there, you know?
Well, I think we've, we've, there's been a lot of work in, in each school to ensure participation in, in the state mandated exam. Ultimately, students and families are making the decisions about refusal. It, it's, it's, it's understandable, I think, for a student who has already met their graduation requirement right now to, to question whether or not that's something that, that they want to invest their time.
The final column is the percentage who are at or above level four, level four and five. That's, that's a four, it's not a participation.
That's a requirement, yeah.
Right, so I was, so that final column, sorry. That's, I mean, are we, do we have something in mind if we want them to be one of these 50 or above? You know, 50% or above, maybe, or a median level, you know, four or five, if you can, if I have that?
Yeah. The, the test is two years old. So we, we don't really fully know what the appropriate benchmark might be to designate some sort of excellence. It's convoluted by the fact that the numbers of kids not taking the assessment, we have not been able to get a true measurement of what those students know and are able to do on those assessments. And then it's further complicated because there's no, there, there's no measurement, there's no measurement within the test itself to tell us if the question was answered in a valid way. So there's no distinction between, if I sat down and I have a three-pronged word problem and I spend 12 seconds on it and I spend twelve seconds on it versus another student who spends seven minutes on it. There's no distinguishing that in data that comes back to us. So when we have a important number of students who also have met graduation requirements, we can't get that, we can't get at that, that real look of, of what it means, so that's not an excuse, it's, it's obscuring the data for us. What the, what the benchmarks will be ultimately, I'm not quite certain. There, there's a confluence of a lot of events that are going to happen here. So one is the reauthorization of the elementary and secondary student, every student succeeds act, right, ESSA? Which, where the, the federal requirement is that you need one standardized assessment at the high school level in English and in mathematics as a graduation requirement. I think all of us here believe that standardized assessments have a place in education, but it's a very specific place. And it's one parameter of a number of problems. And so when, when the federal government says you have the opportunity here to take one graduation requirement. And the state of New Jersey has gone down the path of upwards of seven assessments within that same timeframe. Something may change there. I, I think that, um, in the next sixteen months, there will be a new administration as well. A number of the candidates who are to be the next governor of this state have, have campaigned on very specific views on, on, on where we are with PAR. So I, I, I think that some of this may also shift. But I, I, I wouldn't know, I wouldn't pretend, you know, and I don't think Dr. Moore or Dr. Hazel would, two years into a new test? That is, that isn't sort of tried and true yet at this point, to, to come up with what number we think would be acceptable for what the, what a, what an excellent performance might look like. You know, we used to be able to see certain trends with the NJAS, so once you, with the NJAS sort of rolled down over a number of years. Folks knew that the fifth grade NJAS tend to be a little bit more difficult than some of the others, and so there would be a gap there. And, and sort of nuanced understandings of that don't exist presently, so that's a problem. I think that, um, for those of you who've had children, take it, when you look at individual student reports, it's, it's, the individual data isn't, isn't there in a, in a way that I think really informs us truly where the student struggled or excelled at. There's still some very broad categories and you don't get any sort of item analysis around that to, 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 to dig in in, in, in more nuanced ways. So the only sort of assumptions we can make are really broad programmatic assumptions that are, are, are relatively unknown in terms of how that connects to what our program is and how our students' performance is gauging any progress within that, that program or not relative to these assessments. If that, if that makes sense, that was a long answer, but. I would, I would hope as a, as a parent or for, uh, and as a superintendent of schools, that no student would ultimately have to take seven standardized assessments to graduate from high school. So hopefully, uh, there'll be some movement on that. Because New Jersey, um, in terms of its thinking around that, uh, is really in a very different place than some of the more progressive areas across the country. That's not, that's not an excuse. Folks who know me know that, uh, we've pushed hard here for participation in advanced placement courses, for participation in honors courses and for other assessments that we use that we think really give us nuanced understandings of students' needs and strengths within our program, uh, so that we can attack it from both angles. When you put the, uh, the high stakes requirements to that and you sort of, what's the word for seven times? You know, yeah. And, 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 and you go at it in, in that manner, I think that, um, we set ourselves up for, uh, a very different understanding of what, what achieve any of the means within our schools. We saw it in the portfolio process last year, our portfolio process here for the regional high school district disproportionately hit our English language learners. Disproportionately hit, uh, across socioeconomic lines. And, and so, you know, where that, um, where that plays out, uh, we'll see the Ed Law Center has challenged that. And so they're, they're taking up that charge in, in, in the courts. Again, I, I, I think that standardized assessments have their place when they're done well and when they're done within a framework that is just one of multiple pillars to understand who that student is within your system. We have the school calculator here today. We had students who used their creativity to envision a project that then had to, had to prioritize their time with their teacher to bring their project to fruition in terms of the development. So they had to plan for that. They then had to, had to present that in a way that allowed them to be selected to go conduct the work on, on, on the windows. They then went out and they had a very tight timeline to bring the task to completion. So they had to manage their time, they had to scale what, what it, what it looked like from their drawing to a window, and they had a couple hours to do that. And if that's not an example of like what authentic learning really looks like in the real world versus whether I can really bubble this five-question mathematic assessment well seven times? My bets are on that, that sort of project development piece to how well I do it in, in, in the real world. That doesn't mean, again, that, that, I, I think that standardized assessments tell us some important things about student needs and student strengths and programmatic needs and programmatic strengths. But I think you can, you can glean that from a much more scaled back version of what this envisioned. Any other questions?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, you would represent, you said that the regional is seventy-seven percent. So twenty-three percent of our ninth graders took anything in seventh or eighth grade, the algebra.
No, not necessarily. So, so what that seventy-seven percent means is that seventy-seven percent of our Algebra I students took the NJAS. So we go back one slide. So thirteen, thirteen hundred valid scores in Algebra I. And that represents seventy-seven percent of our Algebra I students. There's another, uh, there's another close to two thousand students in the, that's only about half of our ninth graders. There's another whole chunk of ninth graders who are out there in geometry and in Algebra II. Who are, who are not taking the PAR.
Not taking it because they took it in their sending district, whatever. So what does that represent in the New Jersey? Isn't that the same, same, uh?
No, and that's an important point because when we talk about only a subset of our students are involved in this test. They're being compared to all of the students throughout New Jersey, middle school, high school, wherever they are.
So that number there is everyone in New Jersey that took Algebra I, maybe there is seventh, eighth or ninth grade?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so our, our, Algebra I's where that happens more uniquely than anywhere else in any of this picture. That our, our ninth grade students, sometimes even later grade students, if they're coming out of a, a resource math context, they're taking Algebra I later in their high school career, they're taking the Algebra I PAR and they're being compared to all students across New Jersey who take the Algebra I PAR, whether they're accelerated in seventh and eighth grade or they're similar students as that.
And what's the number of PAR? What does that mean? What's that?
That's across the PAR states, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand students took the Algebra I PAR exam. Yeah.
Where's that, where, that nation?
Six, six states.
Yeah, we're down to about six to seven states.
Six states, so the consortia of New Jersey's with the largest share of that in terms of the number of testing.
One way to compare, so seventy-seven percent of our Algebra I students is thirteen hundred students. If we go back, seventy-seven percent of our English I students is two thousand. So you can see all of our students take ninth grade English Language Arts. So you can see that, you know, our, our, our freshman class is pushing close to three thousand. So that's, that's seventy-seven percent of our English Language Arts ninth graders. Our, our Algebra I subset is much smaller. Just an answer, did you have a question too?
Yes. So the bottom line is, class of twenty twenty, you don't have to pass the PAR, but you have to take the PAR.
Yes.
Yes.
Cause you know, I tell you.
You have to take all of them.
Right. I think people are gonna need a big wake-up call, at least in Marlboro, because if you read the newspapers, the reporting on it was pretty shabby in that the headlines and the articles say, class of twenty twenty, you don't have to pass the PAR. So if you read that article, you would have thought, well, my kid doesn't have to take the PAR because he doesn't have to pass it. But the articles never said, and I'm, look, I'm talking about the Star Ledger and the Asbury Park Press. The articles never said you had to take the test. And given that there was a very high level of people opting out in Marlboro, I think class of twenty twenty, I think there's, they may be in for a rude awakening.
I, I agree.
If you just read the newspaper, you're gonna be in for a rude awakening.
We, we have to note that, I mean, this has been an evolving chart, uh, this one as well. And, uh, some of the finer points of these two charts have, have sort of landed onto this chart after those students moved beyond their Algebra I part. So, so some of, some of what we're reading in this is a, is a fate for students who, who, whose families chose to participate or not participate in Algebra I PAR before any of this was really solidified. And that's, that's something that we have to, have to reckon with now. Is that we have students and families making a decision to refuse an exam before the full implications of that were really, really solidified. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore, thank you, Dr. Hazel. So the twenty-seven step map will be available in everybody's mailbox tomorrow morning. We'll, we'll, we'll reconvene up on, on the stage. So we'll, uh, we're gonna continue with the evening and, uh, Mr. Voice is going to provide an update regarding the athletic facilities at Howell High School.
So, uh, in recent years, the, the board has made a significant effort, a financial effort, to upgrade some of the outdoor athletic facilities. We've replaced, uh, four tracks in the last three years. And next up in that process, as we developed the budget that we're in now, uh, was the track at Howell High School. But the conversation at that time and for some time has been that Howell High School's track can't be looked at in isolation because of a number of factors that affect the availability of fields for the students, uh, in that school. So they have, um, they have less field space to work with. It's a very active school as far as participation goes and enrollment wise, it's one of our larger schools. So for the fiscal year two thousand seventeen budget that we're in now, the district appropriated some funds from capital reserve, um, to explore and ultimately provide a, a track and a turf field at Howell High School. And, uh, I wanted to just to brief the board on the status of that work. The next section on the agenda are board reports, so I'm, I'm hijacking the finance committee report from, uh, Mr. Messinger. But I get clear with them, and, and any member of the finance committee please supplement as necessary. So the, the process really breaks down into three components. The first is the analyze, planning, design and approval process, that's where we are now. Our initial step was to engage the help of an experienced engineering firm, and we did that. Joe Perillo with Suburban Engineering, uh, who's here with us tonight. Atler Rambis, our director of soils and grounds, and myself, I've really been running point on the project to look at, you know, what are the critical elements of, um, a track and turf field project at, at Howell High School? The, the initial engineering work, which primarily has to do with what to do with the water, all right? So the, the current design, the current drainage system is obviously constructed for a, uh, natural grass field, um, so the turf field is different, it requires a different way to handle that water. And that initial engineering has been done. We do know that the, the, the project will be substantially in the same footprint as.
I'm having trouble hearing you a little bit.
Oh, I'm sorry. So the, the initial engineering work has to do primarily with the flow of water. So that work has been done and those initial plans have been, uh, submitted to the Freehold, the, not Freehold, Soil Conservation District, which reviews plans for whether or not they're acceptable to proceed with the project. And so that's the authoritative, um, or the regulatory approval that's required for this project. They, that takes some time to do, we anticipate to have their answer, um, somewhere in December. And that will be one of the pieces that will, um, in, inform the specifications that we put out as we move into the next phase, which is the bid and award. Now, the bid, the specifications for the project, we've discussed some of the things that the district needs to make decisions on as far as what type of manufacturers and how, how our bid specs are being designed to be as inclusive as possible and also to preserve the options of the board as far as, um, the type of surface that we ultimately go with. And, and the criteria for that, the characteristics of cost, obviously, safety, playability, uh, what, what is the maintenance effort needed, um, in both time and money, the longevity of it? So there's a number of different factors that, um, the different types of turf fields, there's, uh, pros and cons to really any of those decisions. But one of the main pieces of information that ultimately will need to make that decision is going to be the cost. And that'll come from the bids that we receive once we finalize the specifications. And again, those speci- specifications will be finalized once we receive approval from the Freehold Soil Conservation Districts. So, um, as we come to, uh, hopefully in December, going out on the street with our, our bid, receiving it, analyzing it, that's really where the full board comes into place to, to say, here are the alternatives that came in with the bids. And then we make our decisions on regarding the board. We're optimistic on the pricing of this because we've decided to do the timing, uh, to have this work done in the spring. Now, most districts will have their tracks or fields worked on over the summertime. There are spring sports and then there's, there's football season in the fall. So the big push for the contractors is, you know, right when school lets out, uh, up until September. In working with, um, the principal, Mr. Broderman of Howell High School, you know, we're going to have to displace the spring sports that use that area. It's something that, uh, our other high schools have had to do as we replaced their tracks in recent years. We're fortunate to have six high schools, so we have some places that we can work with, uh, to, to find space for them. But Mr. Broderman's working on that and, and we should be able to do that. But because most of this type of work doesn't happen until the summertime, we're expecting competitive bids from the contractors. And so hopefully, hopefully we'll receive that. If we do go out to bid in December, uh, receive in January, award in February, once the weather breaks in the spring, that's when the work will begin, so somewhere in the neighborhood of, of March. That will be finished by, certainly in time for football season. Most likely, the milestones will have us done before the summer gets underway. So that's sort of where we are on that. And, uh, so we just wanted to touch base with the full board and, and bring you up to speed on where we're at. Any questions on, uh, just clarifications and anything of that nature? Mr. Messinger, any supplemental comments? Michael, any comments?
You did a phenomenal job, I can't.
Okay, so, uh, more to come, uh, once we get approval and I will take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Voice. So that concludes a lot portion of the report, Mr. Moses.
Okay, uh, next up is, uh, board reports, we have finance.
You know what, the entire meeting was about the, uh, field complex in Howell and Sean did a fine job, so there's nothing else to worry about.
And then there's policy?
Just one notation, there was not a policy meeting, but there was a policy around, uh, children in foster care that was mandated by the state to be adopted prior to December tenth. In order to expedite that, uh, that's on the agenda, uh, and it won't just be through one read. Because there was changes in federal code related to that.
Okay, uh, next up is college participation, we have two names. Mr. Joseph, is it Gold? Wherever you want to speak, there, it doesn't matter, that's fine. That's fine.
Uh, for those of you who didn't hear my name, it's Gold. Uh, I graduated from Freehold Borough High School in 2009. I currently reside at Cranford in Union County. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of Dr. Brent Holman. I met Dr. Holman in February of 2006, a year after my father passed away. Uh, I was fifteen years old, had no idea really what to do or who to turn to. Dr. Holman helped me find what to do and who to turn to. At the time, in a young man's life, he really needs a male role model, father figure, and that was Dr. Holman. He was able to help me take all the emotion I was feeling, and positively apply to my, both my academics and my high school wrestling career, I was in all four years, uh, I was a secret student. And he was able to help me in a healthy, constructive way, as he has with countless other students. I'm giving you just a very brief account of the impact he had on me. I can tell you there are countless other students that he impacted this way. He, he was able to counsel so many people through whatever obstacles he had, or he or she had, you know, in their lives. I'm standing here for you, as a man about to be a father for the first time in the next few weeks, and I can only hope that I can reach my son the way that Dr. Holman reached me. And I can only hope that Dr. Holman can continue to provide support for those who need him, like I needed him. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Next up is Melissa.
Hi, how are you? So I wrote down a few things as well before. My name is Melissa Ducker, um, and I'm also a graduate from Freehold Borough High School in 2009, um, and I'm also a recent graduate from Rutgers University with my master's in clinical social work. And I came all the way down from West New York to question, you know, I've been trying to reach Dr. Holman also in the school, and no one has been able to give me an answer of where he is, and other alumni and myself are questioning where he is. We, we've been trying to get in touch with him, um, and, you know, we're shocked to find out that he's not in Freehold Borough anymore. Is there any answer that he has can give us to let us know where he is?
No, I think there isn't.
Okay. Well, the reason I wanted to contact him was to personally thank him for the support and guidance that he provided throughout my scholastic and professional career. Uh, Dr. Holman is the part, reason why I entered to the field of social work. After experiencing a number of losses in my family, Dr. Holman provided a warm, comforting, and consistent presence for many students like myself. Dr. Holman empowered us in a gentle and patient way to get up and go to school knowing everything was going to be okay in the end. He made every single one of us feel special, and he had the time to hear our voice. Speaking for myself and other alumni, um, at Freehold Borough, I can say that this is a tremendous loss to the high school and the Freehold community. While my time at Freehold Borough, I remember how Dr. Holman was seen as the hero who everyone turned to in need. During 2007, when we were faced with a tragic accident, when the three boys passed away, um, Lundee, Dragonetti, and Morna, Dr. Holman transformed the school into a safe haven and lifted the spirits of many students in need. I remember he transformed the library to a safe place where students could come in and how they please and be able to express their feelings without judgment or hesitation. After speaking to a number of my classmates in girls soccer, wrestling, field hockey, field hockey, Dr. Holman provided the kind of confidence and guidance they needed to excel and manage sports and classes. Psychology Club and Mission Transition was another thing that I was involved in, and he was a key factor in those, um, activities that made an impact on the school and so many students and alumni. Um, he always made time to help and teach and to encourage and empower us to be the best that we can be. And as a professional now and adult, I can look back to my time in high school and say that Dr. Holman has inspired me to get into this field. When I speak to my clients today, I remember the presence he left, and I aspire to touch everyone the way that he touched me, and mainly others. In closing, it is unfortunate, truly heartbreaking, that the students currently or upcoming will not have the same support and guidance that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Next up is the agenda, which is G1 through K2, including the addendum of G3 and also G15.
Yes. In addition to G3, which was made available with the agenda in the back of the room, there's, uh, also added to the agenda, G15, I'll read it, I'll read it into the record. Be resolved that the Freehold Regional High School District Board of Education approves, upon recommendation of the superintendent, the separation agreement on file in the Personnel Department with employee number 10742. In addition to that, Mr. Moses, there's, uh, a few corrections, brief corrections. Uh, we need to make a change in the six-period assignments noted on the agenda. Uh, the need is imminent, and that start date for the following five people needs to, this is Resolution G12, um, needs to move to, um, for those teachers to begin their six-period assignments tomorrow. The teachers are Jillian Vera, Amy Brewer, Judy Cologne, Lauren Riden, and Michelle Stevens. Um, so those six-period assignments will begin tomorrow, end date remains the same. Also, uh, on item, uh, there's a correction under personnel, item number seven, G7, approval of change of status. Um, the dates under Danielle Racine, leave of absence should be effective December 8th, 2016, uh, to April 17th, 2017, and using sick time from 10:1416 to 12:0716, that's the change. Further down the board agenda, um, needs to have 12:082016 rather than the 12:072016. So would that change also those two changes?
Thank you, Mr. Voice. Okay, so K1 through, uh, I mean, G1 through K12, uh, sorry, G1 through K2, uh, we'll take it one shot. Discussion, motion. Thank you, second. Second motion? Thank you. Okay, discussion. Seeing on, Mr. Voice.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes.
This is Ben Hauser?
Yes.
This is Laddler?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Sutera?
Yes.
Mr. Corolo?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Okay, next up is old business, new business, therefore there's no business. Okay, uh, we have a vote to, uh, a motion to adjourn the meeting, motion? Thank you.
I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. So shall you say, so shall it be written. Thank you for coming.